So today is really a supplemental training for candidates and it's also beneficial if you're a campaign manager or a group leader to make sure that you really understand the importance of school board members, school board authority, the superintendent's authority and um who's the separation of duties and roles and responsibilities. So with that being said, I have two very special guest advisors with us today. As Stuart said, we have Pam Kirby and Sherri Story. Pam and Sherri both have extensive experience as a former school board member and also now as the leaders within their own state, guiding, mentoring and training school board members within their state. Pam is a former Arizona school board member. She's the founder and president of the Arizona Coalition of School Board Members. So if you're in Arizona, you need to be a part of this network and this group and you do not have to be a current school board member to be a a member of this group, but I would encourage everyone to sign up and join that that um membership because she has fantastic training. She just finished up a workshop that if you missed it, uh you don't want to miss the next one. And then next we have Sherri Story. Sherri is um not too far from me here in DC. She is a former school board member in Virginia. She is the founder and chairman of the School Board Alliance of Virginia. I know that Sherri is all across the state crisscrossing, supporting school board members. I know with uh she works with other groups in Virginia with candidates. So it's important if you're not a member of this group, you should be. And obviously I am a former school board member in Florida, so does the chairman. So you're going to get a lot of experience and hands-on um knowledge from this this training here. So let's just get this out of the way. We have a few slides and then we'll go into discussion and questions. But school board members, why is it important that you understand the roles and responsibilities? As a candidate, as a group leader, as a school board member, it's important for you to understand that school board members are sworn and they take an oath. And these oaths are really dictated by the school board authority and responsibilities defined in state statute. So candidates, campaign managers, everyone else that is um a part of this webinar right now, your your homework is to research your state statute, read the code, read the titles, read the articles. Every state has a different term that they call it, but for example, here in Ohio, they have there it's a chapter and Florida, it's a statute and Arizona, what's it called Pam?
Statue.
Statue?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Virginia is
State code.
State code. So but the whole uh importance of this slide right here is to give you some homework so that you really understand where it's defined and how to navigate through each states different and we want you to understand that. So we're going to briefly run through this and then we're going to open this up to the discussion. So what you'll find mostly in all these state statutes, it's pretty well across the board and ladies, tell me if I'm, if it's really any different within your states. Number one responsibility of a school board member is academic success of all students. Second response, second responsibility is direct the mission and goals within your district by establishing policies. That to me is number two with it as a school board member. Your job as a school board member, once you're elected, is to make sure that your policies align with your mission and goals and vision and making sure that academic success for all students. Another area that's a school board member's responsibility, and we're going to talk about this more in depth, is the hiring and holding your superintendent accountable. Um, this is a huge problem. It's a there's a lot of misconceptions out there about what is the role of your superintendent? What's the role of a school board? So we're going to make sure that you understand that. And then your job as school board members is to assess the superintendent's performance and sure effective organizational planning. And here's the other biggie, and it shouldn't be number seven on here because I really consider it number up there with one, two and three. It's approving the budget because the budget is very important to the success of your district and um this is one of your I'm going to say one of your major roles and it's going to be very time consuming for all board members is to understand that budget to make sure that it aligns with the goals, mission and strategic plan. Um, but maintaining account accountability through transparency and open communications. Those are other responsibilities of the board. So ladies, let's jump into the discussion here. That was a lot right there. But as leaders within your state, especially now that you are leading um a cohort of up and coming school board members, um new school board members and even seasoned school board members, what are we still seeing as misconceptions of the duty of school board members? Pam?
Yeah, so um the one big area in Arizona that I would add to that list because it's uh pervasive throughout everything that a school board member would touch is approval of contracts. So that would be um teacher contracts even, superintendent contracts, it's curriculum purchases. Uh, school board members have the fiduciary duty to approve all of those contracts. Some states may have um limp thresholds that anything under a hundred thousand, for example, in one fiscal year does not require the approval of a school board member. So check your own state statutes and codes for that. Uh, one of the misconceptions is that the school board has the authority to manage people in the district. The reality is the only employee that a school board member has the authority to hire, fire, um negotiate specific contractual components to is the superintendent. So um if often there might be a principal or an assistant superintendent that gets sideways with the school board, uh, the board cannot do anything about that other than lean on the superintendent to manage his or her employee.
That's a very good point because as a school board member, I did always have uh individuals in the community coming up to me saying, oh, I applied for, you know, a position within the district. Well, that's great, but um I don't hire and uh fire the the employees within the district. Sherri, what are some of the misconceptions you're seeing? Right now within the Virginia school board?
Sure. So in Virginia, it's a little different. There's um, there is specific uh code that says um that the superintendent only has the ability to recommend for hire to the board. And so in that way, all hiring authority is under the school board and and he is to bring every um uh theoretically, um principal, everyone who he wants hired, he must bring it to the board for recommendation and the school board recommends. So the ultimate hiring authority um is actually under. Now, we don't participate in the HR decisions, but if a school board wants to see the top three candidates and then hear the recommendation of the school board, especially in those upper level positions that are getting big, big six-figure salaries, they can do that. One school board just said, we want to sit in, we want to have a member sit in on some of these very top level positions um in the hiring process. Um, so ultimately in Virginia, they do have, the code does said they must bring for recommendation. Now mostly when it's teachers and so on and bus drivers, they bring a list. Maybe it could be part of the consent agenda. It could be part of just um the action item. But the school board is to, it actually has that authority in Virginia. They must approve of all hires and they could theoretically reject a hire as well um at that point. I think another misconception is who defines the lanes? You know, we have had a school board association, uh the VSBA. And they have, they and the superintendent association has a lingo that has really curbed what the school board members think their authority is because very often the superintendent will uh proclaim, you're getting in my lane. And so there's these lanes and the lanes are very narrow, it would seem for school board members. And so what we've been promoting is actually the lanes of the school board are defined by the law. That's what defines the lane. The lane that school board members are in are the laws. And so we have a section of law called the standards of quality. And in those standards of quality, um the the local school board shall is mentioned over a hundred times. Now that's a pretty big lane. If you take that seriously, they shall do this and they shall do that. And you don't have to give up any of those rights um to anyone else. You can give um some of these tasks um away. Mostly it's oversight. It's to oversee that these things are happening. So I think that's a misconception as to uh the school boards having a very tiny lane, the superintendent's having a six-lane highway going down the road. Where actually the lanes are defined in the law of what the school boards do.
Absolutely. And I think that just really brings it back to the slide right here. That's why it's important for as um candidates and community members and school board members, you have to understand what is, what does the law actually say? Because over the last, I'm gonna, I don't even know how long, but like Sherri said, you know, school board authority is here, but over the last several years and decades, you know, just by the norms, school board members have given over their authority. Have you seen that Pam?
Most definitely. In fact, um, so there's the law statutes, uh code, titles, articles that read much like what was just described, may's and shall's. What happens, what has happened here is um a a local state association that may be affiliated with the National School Boards Association has helped school board members over the past forty years interpret statute into school board policy. And in that interpretation over time, what we've seen is that when setting policy, which is school board members as a body approve policy for their district. It, we've seen an erosion of power from the state statute through that interpretation into policy. Where the school board members have just um over time, the boards, they delegated their authority to the superintendent. And a school board can in fact do that. They can delegate authority. But it's not advised um because then it's obviously stripped that authority from the school board and given it to the superintendent who then runs his or her kingdom. And so what we're trying to do is uh provide a different lens to those statutes into writing new policies that pull that authority back to the school board. And of course, what I like to call the institution of public education, which are the superintendents, their associations, the teachers' union, the other association that trains school board members. The institution will fight that every step of the way. They do not want to relinquish that power.
Absolutely, absolutely Pam. I totally agree. And in fact, they really, in the beginning, we've had some school boards flipped here in Virginia. And what the um whether if it's out of fear, whether I don't know the motivation behind it, the lack of wanting to lose power, I can't, you know, I I can't um say exactly, but they use words like as school boards um as the new leadership uh asserts their authority, they can even have the desk book, the law desk book in their hands and say, this is our authority to do it. Um, very often the pushback uses words like you are causing chaos. You are causing chaos and you're not focused on the children. And you know, that's, and so they use these, this terminology to really attack this new lens of, no, this was always our authority. We gave it away. We're taking it back. And this kind of um, I think a definition to governance that what Pam and I are talking about is oversight. It is a word. You can look it up in any dictionary. Governance isn't to make policy and then sit back. It's to oversee that that policy through uh good procedures and protocols of administration to see that that policy is um is being enacted. So I think oversight is one of the words that we're trying to bring back to the definition of governance. And you can't oversee something you can't see. So if you are denied reports, if you are denied information, then you're being cut from doing your duty of oversight and good governance.
Ladies, let me ask you this question because we're going to have um individuals, we're going to put this up online so our school board members can access this um webinar, but for our candidates that are currently running right now, why is this information important to them? About understanding the roles and responsibilities and misconceptions.
Okay, I'll ju- I'll jump in on that. Um there are entities that have been training school board members and the first day you're, once you're elected, everyone's going to want to train you. And they um will tell you that your role as a school board member is to support the superintendent. They will train you that your role as a school board governing member is much like that of a nonprofit board member. You are a cheerleader. You are there to support the superintendent. You are there to promote the district and all the great things that it does. Um, it's important to know now before you get in what your role really is in governance and policy as has been described, because if you're going in it into that seat to be a cheerleader and to support the superintendent and everything here she wants, you are not going to be an effective school board member. Um, from the lens of people like or organizations like the Arizona Coalition of School Board Members or Freedom Works, et cetera. Um, it is not uh for the faint of heart to play the governance or to fulfill that governance duty. It is difficult, particularly if you're on a school board and you don't have the majority. If you're functioning in the minority and you're trying to to be an effective school board member with governance, it is going to be stressful. And and so and you have to have thick skin and you have to also uh understand that you know, part of the training that I give, I tell the candidates. As soon as you are elected, you are assigned a handler from the school district. Whether that's a superintendent, whether that may be an assistant superintendent, it is going to be somebody who's going to buddy up to you and make you think you're fantastic and try to influence you in what you should be doing. And um the uh and it's, it's an easy trap to fall into if you don't know upfront before you get in that seat, what your role really is.
Yeah. Yeah, I so agree with everything Pam said a hundred percent. Um, and this is the experience of new board members all across the nation. It's just not in in Arizona, in Virginia. I can't tell you how many calls I'm on that it is the exact same thing. They have been training for a long time how to get control of the public schools through school boards. And you know, I have to say they did a good job. They, they took away the powers and duties of the school board and convinced school board members to hand it over to superintendents and then the, I mean, there are so many uh fewer superintendents in the state than school boards. So all they had to do was convince school boards to turn it over to the superintendent and then there, there are many less of those and and that's how so many of these um just that's how our public schools got hijacked. So I really affirm what Pam said um a hundred percent. You must have a thick skin. You must stand for what you know and then keep going to good training on your laws. So and have people you can call and reference and um stick with it. Um, because there will be um a tsunami of people that will accuse you of all sorts of things. Um, and and not being supportive of a superintendent will be a huge one. And literally our state's organization says that's what makes a bad school board member. Is when the votes don't come out seven to zero or eleven to zero, you are a bad school board member. And that could not be farther from the truth. And we don't have any other elected body that operates under those kind of rules that says everything has to be approved with this eleven to zero vote. And um I think that just shows you how much school boards have been hijacked in the past. And now we're learning that that was not good, that was not a, it did not have a good effect on public schools because they're, they're just totally lacked oversight of what was going on within them.
Yes. So we are going to move on now and start talking about the roles and responsibilities and authorities um that we, that superintendents have. But if you're a candidate and you're watching this video, I'm hoping that you will incorporate into your talking points how backwards the system has gotten with the lack of board members um knowing the statutes, knowing their constitution and so forth, and how you as a candidate and new school board member will be able to make some changes. So now we're going to talk about the real rules of the superintendent. Executive authority of a school district resides primarily with the district superintendent. And I think that's what we're talking about here. So superintendent authority, what everyone needs to remember is the superintendent works for the board. Ladies, I think we've seen over the last, especially through COVID, that it almost appeared that board members work for the superintendent. Anytime anything was going wrong, board members would always refer to the superintendent, any decision, tough decisions that were being made, they would always put it back on the um superintendent. But that's why it's important for you to understand what your state statutes um lay out because most likely you what that line of what your state statute and code will say is, well, it won't say directly that the superintendent answers to the board, but in essence, that's what it's, you know, it does mean. It's the superintendent's job. He's, he or she's like the chief financial or chief executive officer managing, controlling operations, administration, supervision, day-to-day operations. And I went, I'm going to ask you all about that here in a second.
Right, Laura, jump in on just to something. So it's important also to understand, particularly COVID's a perfect example in that it was new. We as a society in had in recent decades have never experienced anything like that. And what we were seeing in the closing of schools and the Zoom schools. And nothing was defined in state statute as to how we're supposed to handle this. And um it's important for you all to know as school board members that you cannot break the law when you're setting district policy. The law is your statute, okay, or in your, in your code, et cetera. You cannot break the law. But if the law or statute is silent, then you have the authority as a school board of five or seven to set district policy to fill that gap as long as it doesn't violate the constitution. And so what I saw happening is the law was silent during COVID. And it's not just COVID. This happens throughout the year on other um things. The law will be silent. The school board will not have the courage to do the research or do the right thing. And so they delegate to the superintendent and let the superintendent make all of the decisions. And then the school board often just sits there and becomes the rubber stamp in very difficult, stressful situations. Again, that's understanding your role before you get in there. Um, because if you're going to just be a cheerleader and not be willing to put that time, effort and energy into the very difficult decisions, um, you will find yourself also delegating to the superintendent.
I, I want to key off that word cheerleader. So it was very interesting. This past November, our governor, Governor Yonkin um was invited to the new meeting of the new um board members for our state universities. And they're governed by a board as well. And so he was invited to give a um a welcoming speech and a speech to them. And he specifically stated, he said, you are not to be the president's cheerleader of the university. You are to hold the president of the university, which would be akin to the superintendent. You are to hold the president accountable for the, what's going on in your university. And he said in his speech, you cannot do that if you are a cheerleader for him. We just had another uh recent training that um some members came back and uh literally they were told unfortunately, um was that the superintendent is a member of the school board, just a non-voting member. And that is so not true. And neither is the attorney, the member of your school board. So um uh, another example is that it's like a marriage. Well, it's not like a marriage. You do have to work together, but it's still employee employer. And many employers get along with their employees. It doesn't have to make it adversarial um to have that kind of uh contentious relationship. You still have the roles of employer, employee. It's not a marriage. And so that, I think that's a poor example in my opinion.
That's a good point because when it does become contentious is whenever the employee doesn't understand what their role is, right? So I want to ask both of you this because I know as a board member, I got so much pushback because they would always refer back to what's underlined here. It's the superintendent's job to manage the day-to-day operations. So if I was to ask about a contract or why are we doing it that way? I would even get pushed back from other conservative board members saying, that's not our job. That is, you know, don't get into the weeds. That's the day-to-day.
Yeah. So uh, okay. First, I want to just clarify on this slide. The superintendent works for the board as a body. You're a governing body. Um, let's just say there's five of you. It's whatever the majority rules. The superintendent does not work for you as an individual board member. So that's important to keep in mind. Um, as the board sets policy, that policy is then implemented by the superintendent. While often when you are voting on that policy, you're getting the one hundred thousand foot dog and pony show presentation. It, it's just, and it's going to sound fantastic and wonderful and oh, this is so great for the children. Then as it gets implemented, the devil's in the details. And um we have, I have a um amazing example of a homework policy several years ago that the board approved five zero. It sounded fantastic. But then as it got implemented, the teachers started coming to us to complain about how, what they were being asked to do. That, that took a year. We heard a one year of complaints from the district. And um as we, some of us tried to understand what was happening, we got accused, just as Laura said, of getting mired in the day-to-day operations and we should not be in the weeds. We are outside of the scope of our responsibility. But I would contend and that um you're approving a policy. And if it's not being implemented in the spirit in which you approved it, you have every right to get involved, to understand it better. Um, the, the ending to that story is a year later, we were able to bring that policy back to the dais and repealed it five to zero.
Right. You have to know if your policies are working for the benefit of your employees and students. You won't know if that's working unless you give some oversight, unless you ask for some reports. It's like curriculum. Yes, you um, you have oversight over uh implementing and and choosing curriculum, at least in Virginia. Uh, that is an oversight response. That is an oversight responsibility of the board to approve curriculum. But you also have to know if that curriculum is working. And if your reading scores, let's say it's reading curriculum, are consistently low and dropping, well, then something is not working. And one of the questions you have to ask is, is it the curriculum? Is the curriculum not aligned? Is the curriculum not working for the teachers that can't implement it? You do have the responsibility to ask those questions. And asking questions is not getting in the weeds, asking questions is asking questions. It is looking for factual information of why something is is not perhaps working for the students. Perhaps you are asking a lot of questions about budget because so much money is being spent, but academic achievement isn't being affected. You have a right to ask those questions. Asking questions does not equate getting in the weeds. Asking questions equates with having good oversight over what is happening with your policies after you make them.
And that is why one of the areas of opportunity, I think we have, especially with our school board candidates. And you you all both know that I am a big advocate for parents getting elected to a school board. You know, because we need to have that representation of retired school board or retired teachers, maybe retired business owners, maybe retired administrators. But we also need to have parents on these boards because it comes back to are the policies, when we adopt a policy and we ask the superintendent to put those policies in place, how is it being implemented within the schools? Now, as a parent who has children within the district, you know exactly how those policies are being implemented. For example, we had a dress code change. We spent hours and hours on this dress code. And then whenever it come time for them to implement it, it was never implemented. And I knew that because I have four kids in the district and I saw that it wasn't being implemented. So there is a lot of benefit of being a parent and being on that school board, because that's where you can see if those policies are really being implemented the way that the board would like to see those implemented. Okay, here's another area that we want to talk about chief, and I we've kind of mentioned it before, chief executive officer. A lot of districts, they don't even have it on their organizational chart. You'll have basically the school board members right there with the superintendent or what you will see a lot of times, and this is where you need to check with on your website. Does your district organizational chart have at the very top, start with your superintendent? And that if that is the case, then you already know that you're it's lopsided and that's something that you need to fix. What's your experience just by those simple undertones with an org chart, ladies?
Well, I agree, I'll just jump in, and you're right, everyone should check their organizational chart because that is the flow. And that that very often can give away a mindset if the board's not even on it. A lot of times I I have gone on websites and the board's not even mentioned on the chart. And that's the problem. I mean, that's a place to to begin. And if you get pushed back to the board being put on the chart, well, you have a lot, you have a long road to go. Because of course, the school board should be on it. So I I agree, this is this is very important, and I like that the citizens are on there, Laura, because that's who the school board was elected by and is answerable to. And the citizens includes the children. Some people think that we're forgetting children in this process. And and we certainly aren't, just because we are answering to the citizens of the county. They want what's best for the children, and so the two go hand in hand.
Yeah, so rarely in Arizona do you see the community, the citizens on an organizational chart. And in in practice, what you also see is the superintendent trying to drive a wedge between the community and the school board. And the way most often see that is through complaints. You know, if if a parent or grandparent or teacher, someone has a concern or a complaint, they'll go to their school board member that maybe they met on the campaign trail, they got to know them, they have a relationship, can you help me? Well, the superintendent will always say, you are to, Mr. School Board Member, direct all concerns and complaints back to me. Well, check your policies. Because what happens is you think you're, you don't know how to totally answer this parent's complaint. It's it's very, very mired in specifics, you can't get access to private student FERPA information. So you do refer it back. Well, then that parent or that constituent member often just gets like put into a hole of never, never land, never to be heard from again. And there with the organization, the school districts are very, very good at of just passing parent around and delay tactics and never answering their questions. But if you're a good school board member, you probably know that you have a policy in your district that addresses how parent complaints are supposed to be handled. And if you instruct your community member to follow that policy, that in effect has has that has the effect of law in your district. And so if a superintendent says, hey, yeah, just have them send me an email, I'll take care of it. That email does not have the effect of law. But if the policy says, well, this, 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 and this needs to be documented, and then it needs to be sent to these people or 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 processed at this place on a website, and they do that, then that parent, the the superintendent will have to address that parent. And you get you empower that parent with something that, because you're a good school board member and you know your policies, they would have never been granted with just going through the superintendent. You may have often heard, if you have an issue with your teacher, you go to the teacher, then you go to the principal, and you go up the chain. That is a delay tactic. Because most of you, I guarantee you probably have policies in place of how to deal with complaints and concerns.
So that's a good point. All that is under the control and purview of the school board, and you do that through your policies. That's how you set this. And then you can delegate as a board, the policies are, you know, who has authority to do what. I I'm going to jump over to this because this is also a misconception, I think, that the superintendent role is to advise the board. The superintendent is the advisor and counsel to the board before actions and should be requiring the board should be giving them adequate backup information in a timely manner. So what's your thoughts on this? How are you seeing it right now out there actually being played out?
All right, so what I see, and we've taken care of this in Arizona, the superintendent will often hire committees, or not hire, appoint committees, the superintendent's committees. And they were meeting behind closed doors on things like curriculum and school closures and anything else you could you could imagine, budget, anything you could imagine that is critically important to the role of a school member. And then the committee meets and meets and meets. They are all, you know, appointees of the superintendent that will recommend the desired recommendation the superintendent wants. And then they will be paraded before the board, and they will say, you must honor the voice of the committee. This committee has put in countless hours and hard work, and you board, you must honor their voice. We have stopped that in Arizona, and we've addressed the role of the committees. And if they are making recommendations to the board, and this could actually, if it's not a of law in your state that says otherwise, you could make this a board policy. If a committee is making a recommendation to the board, then that committee must be an open, public meeting to all, including you as a board member. You could go sit on any of those committees. And so that's one way that the superintendent tries to manipulate, maybe a strong word, but in my mind, that's what it is. The outcome of board decisions.
Exactly. Another area, and I'll let you jump in on this, Sheri, is where I've noticed as that superintendents will advise the board that we need a consultant on this matter. And then they will go hire the consultant, and they will direct that consultant to give the board the opinion based off what the superintendent wants to. So be cautious of that.
Yeah, that's great. First of all, Pam, thanks for that great idea on policy. I love it, I'm going to take it back to Virginia, thank you so much. And so, you know, you see things happening, and this why, this is why candidates, we accept candidates in our school board alliance, so at a reduced price. And I encourage all candidates to see if you can join us, you can join in Arizona, if you don't have something in your own state. But we we take candidates, and this is, you need that collaboration, you you need these ideas and help. So Pam just gave me a great idea because it's a problem in Virginia. And actually, I didn't think to address it that way. So that's how we can work together on these things. The idea of a consultant, so here is where Virginia has a big issue that we're trying to address. Getting a consultant to come in and write the school board's long term strategic plan. And so they come in and they get parents, and they do incorporate a lot of people, which our law says has to happen. And it is the most beautiful, colorful package in the end. And who would ever go against that? But what we're finding is our, we have laws that say exactly what needs to be in that plan. And the plans are void of those very things. But, oh, they do sound good. Oh, they sound, well, we're going to be innovative, and we're going to be concerned about the jobs in the future, and we're going to do this, and we're and they they end up sounding beautiful, but it's a 37 to 72 colorful packet of word salad. And then, when you actually go look at the law, the seven items that must be in there are not there. And you've had an outside person come in and really hijack the the process that I think our state legislators thought the board would be doing. This is the board's strategic plan, not some high paid consultants. But again, you have to know your law. And so now we're trying to undo that and work with strategic plans. The funny thing is, there must be somewhere out there a magical cloud because all the strategic plans for every school district sound the same. Now, how does that happen? Every district has different needs, and and very often academics is barely mentioned. And there's certainly no measurables in them. And so, you know, they they tend to just be this very generic, pretty packet that really school board members end up, don't even know what's in it. And then, like in our case, they're not compliant with our law.
So we ten minutes, but I want to get to a couple more question or conversations. I do have a question about this strategic plan, so you jumped, your ideas jumped a little ahead, but we'll dive a little deeper into that. But to wrap up this section on the the misconceptions that we're seeing out there, some of the biggest misconceptions that are still out there, even though we have all these wonderful groups trying to give these trainings of giving these board members, you know, empowering them with what is your roles and responsibilities, but there's still some misconceptions out there. Pam?
Over and above what we've already discussed. Oh, I'd have to think, I'll defer, let me think, and I'll defer to Sheri.
I think one of the reasons the misconceptions continue is because they've had 40 years at this to really engrain in in school board members who've gone to training that isn't based on the powers and duties of the school board. And the pushback is so strong. It 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 is just, I I watched three school board meetings last night. Tried to keep up with all three, and the pushback and from the community saying you're creating this hostile work environment for the superintendent, and he's going to sue us, and he's going to sue all of you. I mean, the threats and the bullying is at an all time high. And that's just very difficult to stand against. Sometimes, even if you're in the minority, I watched a three to two district. And, you know, you can see these new board members' eyes going like and I don't blame them because you have 50 people stand up from your community. And, you know, 30 of them say, you are absolutely doing the wrong thing. It's difficult, and I think that's how it ends up continuing. We just have to keep at it.
Yeah, the other opportunity that the space of K-12 government education has is the legal side. And, you know, it all, we've been talking statute, 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 policy. It all comes back to statute, which is a, it goes through a legal process. When you're a school board member and you vote, that is a legal action. So there's tons of law embedded into your role as a school board member. And unfortunately, in the K-12 government education space, most of the lawyers are part of the institution. And so it is very difficult to, and they're there, you just have to find them. There aren't a lot of conservative lawyers that understand education law that can assist you as a school board member when you have that one off question. And what I was going to say on the last slide applies here. That is the other way the superintendents will influence the school board, is through attorneys, whether it's your in-house counsel or your outside counsel. And if you're a, you know, if you're a mom, if you're a CPA, if you're someone who doesn't have legal background, you're really at a disadvantage when you're in executive session behind closed doors, and you've got an attorney who works for the superintendent barking at you, telling you what you should and shouldn't be doing. That is another way this continued, and it takes quite a bit of courage to push back on that.
I agree, Pam, that that's a, that is spot on. I am so glad you brought up that. And we are looking to try to develop a pool of new attorneys and influencers on school boards because you you nailed it. I mean, you are right over the target. That is another manipulative way, and it is manipulation, because you're right, for a mom to stand up against, but they told me. And and then, you know, that 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 erodes her confidence, and you should be able to trust school board attorneys. So thank you, Pam, for bringing that up, that's great.
Okay. So five year strategic plans are very important to drive the mission, goals and vision of the of the district. But the role of the board and superintendent, I think, Sheri, you talked about it, Pam. How important is it for the board to be involved in this?
So we, in in my training for new candidates, we have this discussion of what is the most important role a school board member has? And all of the important roles that are out there. And in my humble opinion, it's this. Because if you can, as a school board member, agree on a three year plan, five year plan, and you can do two B as in boy and C on this slide, set goals and objectives that are measurable, then then you're able to do three D as in boy, which is hold your superintendent accountable. If you don't have, and so the superintendents will often try to weasel out any way possible of setting these kinds of plans. Because as soon as you can do it, now he or she will be held accountable. And as you know, in this space, accountability isn't something that all the employees of a school district are just dying to have. So we see it in ways, so a three year strategic plan or five year plan will take 12 months or two years to build. And it's because in Arizona, what happens every two years? The school board turns over, it changes. And so it's a long game for the superintendents to just try to drag their feet so that they don't have to do this. And if it is a two year strategic plan, well, good grief. I mean, this space is moving so fast that whatever you decided and started on in 2024 and you finish in 2026 is already shelfware by the time you finish it. And then voila, the superintendent gets to start all over again. Is already shelfware by the time you finish it. And then voila, the superintendent gets to start all over again. And um, this is, this is critical. Um, I don't know if you're gonna talk about superintendent performance reviews. Um, but when you have a um, a superintendent that isn't meeting. Your, your, your goal as a board member or isn't achieving the academic success that you would look for. The only way you can do anything about it is through a performance review that has goals, objectives and measurable results. Um, that um, and, and you can, you can act on it. Without this, you've, you've got nothing.
So it's very, what I'm hearing is very important for the board members to be involved in this. And I like what you said Pam, because it is very true. We see it on the national level. Is if we can drag this out long enough, we'll get new individuals elected and we won't have to do what they. They would like us to do. We'll just keep doing what we wanna do, perpetuate the system.
I, I agree. Um, if you don't have measurables, I mean, measurables. If you have schools that are failing in math, you can get to the weeds. You can put that in your strategic plan, not only district, but you can say, by the way, we have these kids that are routinely, annually. Over three, four, five years failing to read, you can stick that in um, as a measurable. Um, to see that that improves and set the bar. Um, this is not a measurable. The graduation rate will increase. That's not a measurable is because, yes, you can tell if it increased or decreased, but by how much? If you have one more student out of uh, two thousand kids graduate, um, is that, you've increased? I mean, you have. If you have kids that go from a reading, if eighty percent of your students in some subgroup cannot read. And they improve it in five years to, well, seventy-eight percent can't read now, is that, is, are you okay with that? Um, when every child, um, almost every child can be taught to read. So the measurables need to, you go and get on the board. And I know academic achievement across the nation needs to be the number one um, measurable component. You need to know where you're starting and what are your expectations for um, increasing academic achievement. And that, that comes down to measurables. And it's not, it's not words like increase or decrease. And you know, just because it says a by your, your strategic plan, doesn't mean you have to have five goals. Find that everyone thinks because it says five year, um, that then you have to have one, two, three, four, five. You do not. Um, if you come up with three good ones and they're measurable down to where you can evaluate. Um, Pam's right, you have to be able to evaluate your superintendent on achieving these goals. And if there's no measurables, you have no way to hold him accountable. And I, I just want to say something that I hear, you're not being mean to the superintendent. If you hold him accountable to your measurables, that's not being mean. And sometimes educators, um, you know, there can be just educators want to be nice. There's just a part of us. We wanna be nice. We are nice in the classroom. And so sometimes that can be a hindrance to former educators. We don't wanna be mean, but holding them accountable is, it, it's not in that emotional realm. It's just accountability so that students get the best education they can.
So I, and this has been such a great conversation and um. To wrap this up, I, I think it would, we would not be doing our, our viewers justice. If we did not at least talk about what is the role of a school board member when it comes to approving a budget? And the formation of a budget. Um, this is. The, one of the biggest responsibilities as a school board member that you will have is overseeing. Like Sheri said, the governance of how the spending is taking place. That is your job. And you can use this budget as um, you, you need to use it as a planning document. The, what you envision for your strategic plan, your budget always should be tied back to your strategic plan. Um, you'll need to have public involvement. You can use this budget as a legal document. Control, because as long as you set the budget and, and you set the parameters of the spending. It helps you as board members control what type of contracts you're gonna come in. And then what you all were talking about, um, the measurables, the, the evaluations. How's your, how's your superintendent doing with um, tying the budget to their strategic plan? To all those measurables you're talking about. Just real quick ladies, your opinion on this? Um, what's the role of a board member in this?
Uh, my, this is in Arizona, the most difficult task. Our budget is um, ten pages of an Excel spreadsheet. And it's got hundreds of lines down. It is government accounting combined with Arizona school finance. Which is an absolute nightmare. Um, it, this slide makes this, this whole process seem very easy and it doesn't even begin to tap into how difficult. This is so difficult that in Arizona, we're actually gonna start um, on March eighteenth, a training session with the coalition. And we're going to have one hour per page of the budget. And it'll be a series of trainings because even after multiple organizations giving multiple trainings on the budget in Arizona. I still have board members come to me and say, I don't understand it. And um, you know, this, this will require you to spend some time and find an expert in your state. That can help you understand this. Otherwise, it's just gonna be like this.
So I will take, um, I'll take this and apply it to the local school district budget. Um, our recommendation, um, how we're trying to bite just little parts of this for new, for school board members, especially new ones. Is um, I think one of the most important committees you can have is a budget or finance committee. And in that, um, uh, one of those gaps Pam, you talked about where you can have a policy. Um, it, our, our law does not say um, anything about having an advisor on a local school committee. And I think this is where you bring in a financial advisor to sit uh, with you on the finance committee. And um, attend uh, the planning session. And, and have an advisor who is, you know, who has dealt with huge budgets. Or you know, million-dollar budgets in the case of some of our districts, or a billion-dollar budget in the case of Fairfax or Loudon, two billion. Really, it takes an advisor to help someone who's done this kind of thing. And, and the billions spent or the millions, hundreds of millions spent in procurement. You know, you can have an advisor on, on sort of on retainer, on tap, um, to help you break it down. And so um, because it's so overwhelming uh, for beginning uh, school board members. I mean, I was just starting to finally, you know, now I've got, you know, a, a, a good handle. But I mean, I've been looking at these for six, eight years. And so I think, I think having an advisor is, is not a bad idea. From the community who's worked in this area and done this and uh, meet with them in a work session and let them help you. Um, walk through these areas.
I agree with both of you on this. Um, and I think it's very, very important that as candidates and school board members. That you connect with groups like Pam and Sheri's because I know both of you offer budget type of trainings. Um, and so this is something that every state's different. And uh, you will hear that school board budgets are the most complicated in government, government, they are. But I'm gonna tell you one thing, it's not impossible for you to learn. Um, what are the right questions to ask? And as a candidate, you need to be at every school board workshop. Whenever they are looking at the budget, discussing the budget, this will be very helpful to you. And also another way that would be helpful to you regarding the budget is going back and watching the videos from the prior year. Um, so. Um, I went to, I don't think we're gonna have time to jump into the second, the next section here. Oops. Don't you love technology? I don't know how to go back. Um, parental rights. Uh, you know, the role of the parent is very important. We as, uh, you know, as board members, you always need to honor that role as parents. And parents' rights are protected by the courts. And it's the role of my, my opinion is, it's the role of a school board member. Is to implement policy that protects the rights of parents.
Pam, do you have a, do you have a parent bill of rights that um, that has been accepted by your legislature?
Yes, we do. We, so to that point, it is law. Um, we have a parent bill of rights that is law. The um, unfortunately, it doesn't have any teeth. So when it gets violated, there's no consequence. And to that point, we have a group here in Arizona who is currently working on um, a teacher bill of rights as well. To protect teachers in the classroom who are trying to do the right thing. And are um, receiving, you know, pushback like we've talked about already. So um, yes, we do. You can, I don't know this, the, the statute off the top of my head. I can get it to Laura. Very, very um, comprehensive.
Yeah, we have, we have um, model policies about parent bills of rights that we promote. Unfortunately, um, you know, we're working on that statewide. Um, but that is sir, one of our core tenants for SBMA is a parent bill of rights and their authority over education. And so we, we strongly promote that.